Wow. Wow. I remember you got hired very much. Oh, wonderful.
Good evening, everyone. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Please feel free to join us.
If you'll bow with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. We just thank you, Lord, for this city that you've made us to be stewards of. And we just ask, Lord, that we be mindful of you and that everything that we do be pleasing in your sight, for it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mrs.?
Here.
First up, we have the approval of the monthly financial report ending August 31st to 2018. Mr. Winningham. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Hang on just a second. That was quick, wasn't it? First, we need to take a motion to approve our minutes from our August 30th, our September 11th, 2018 council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 11th, 2018. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven to zero. Now, Mr. Winningham.
Thank you, sir. We're looking at the month of August. Not a whole lot to talk about this month. Everything's pretty quiet. After a down, not down, a flat month, last month of sales tax, we're back to a positive gain, just under six and a half percent over the same month last year. Year-to-date, we're up about four and a half on sales tax. So, revenue's doing well. Our bottom line here in the general fund still looks a little inflated because of our Conway Court money, but we'll be appropriating that later on this evening, going towards New City Hall, so that will get spent here pretty quickly and come out. Nothing really, I didn't find anything of note to mention anywhere else. If you go to the back page, those major project funds, you may have noticed in the last couple of months, we've had some pretty large amounts coming out of the pay-as-you-go sales tax. The black top you see in town now is being paid for right there. So until our three-eighths cent bill's up to where we can actually use it, the mayor instructed us to use that pay-as-you-go sales tax to do a lot of the paving that you've seen around town. And I think tonight, we're gonna budget some of that three-eighths cent sales tax as well. That's all we've got, Mayor.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials, ending on August 31st. Any further discussion?
Total sales tax revenue percentage-wise is up how much?
Four and a half.
Four and a half? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero.
Yeah, just a quick note, that three-eighths is, it's coming in, you know, a little, we budgeted pretty conservative on it, just because it was such a big project. We were guessing about five, 5.1 million a year, and it looks like it's probably gonna come in 5.2, 5.3, something like that. So, yeah, sales tax across the board is doing well for us this year.
Good. We might want to take a look and see how our projects will lay out in 2019. Have Finley put us a list together?
Yes.
Okay.
That will come back before y'all again.
That's some thing, that's a question that I get asked about. When is this road? And they're very specific about the road they want to talk about. When is this road gonna be fixed?
I bet I can name all three of them, right?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
They're on the list.
Yes, they are. I hope they're high on the list.
They are. 2019, 2020.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Next up, we have our standing committee, starting with community development. Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is resolution setting a public hearing to discuss vacating a portion of a utility easement on Lot 2 in the Grove at Conway. And this resolution is Resolution R. 1835.
Make a motion for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing to discuss vacating utility easement on Lot 2 of the Grove at Conway. Any further discussion?
This sets the meeting, Mr. Mayor, on October 9th at 6:30 in this building.
October 9th. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Any discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector to place certified liens on property located at 108 Fairway Lane as a result of expenses incurred by the city. We have incurred to date $233.16 to bring this property into compliance. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 108 Fairway Lane in Conway with us this evening? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone coming forward, so we have a resolution to read for this item. It's Resolution R. 1836.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve placing a lien on property located at 108 Fairway Lane. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution adopting the pedestrian master plan for the city of Conway. And we have a resolution to be read for this item. It's Resolution R. 1837.
Do we have anyone from BPAP here to speak tonight? What this is about is the city adopting a master plan to help with our walk, oh, I'm sorry, there you go. Would you state your name, please?
Bethany Stovall. I'm on BPAP. We wrote this in, with the advisory council, like, we have the bicycle master plan that's been passed by the city, and so we wanted to do a pedestrian master plan so that we could match the efforts that we've made for bicycle friendliness. If this passes, we can do things like apply for walk-friendly status, like, we have a bike-friendly city status, so we'd really like to do that. It doesn't really change a whole lot of what the city's already doing, kind of just puts it on paper so that we can show that we do support these pedestrian-friendly measures. So it does things like, we took a survey and put a priority list of sidewalk projects that citizens would like to see happen, and projects for sidewalks that need to be fixed, and things like that. And so we had efforts with that at the public library and things like that. So, yeah, that's basically, basically what we have. Are there any questions, by chance?
I appreciate the work that BPAP has done, especially on the sidewalks. That's a tremendous effort on y'all's part, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds for professional services and approval of grant application for the street and engineering department. And there is an ordinance to be read with this one. The ordinance is going to be O. 1889.
And, hi, Ms. Jamie.
Hello, Mr. Hawkins.
How are you?
I'm well.
What can you tell us about this?
I can tell you, this is for the Salem Road Bridge over Tucker Creek, and we are asking for your permission to apply for the grant, as well as to approve the engineers.
As you all know, Salem Roads, especially with work that the county did opening up Highway 25, has really started picking up traffic. And before we can really move to making great improvements to Salem Road, we've gotta widen the bridge. The bridge is only built for single-lane traffic going both ways, and according to Mr. Vincent, we need to double that. So, what we're asking to do is to apply for the loan, the grant, I'm sorry, the grant, and if approved, then we'll, that'll move us that much further to starting some really serious work on widening and repairing on Salem Road.
I was gonna say, I heard you say Salem Road. Thank you very much.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins, you throw Salem Road in that other three, that would be four, that, I can name those four.
Oh, I thought Salem Road was at the top of it. I'm sorry.
Well, it's right there.
Okay. For my friends.
We're starting with the bridge.
For my friends that are listening that live out on Salem Road, it's coming.
Yeah, we're starting with the bridge. Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance approving funds and approving professional services for the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's Ordinance O. 1890.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. And this is our first step on Donaghy Avenue. As you know, we're working with Conway Corporation, their engineering department, so that we're giving them a chance to work on their infrastructure, removing their sewer lines, water lines, repairing whatever they need to do. Finley's gonna start the process on getting the plans designed and drawn up. Conway Corporation will start their proceedings, or projects. I think they're gonna start in 2020, and then once they get all their infrastructure moved and taken care of, then we're gonna come behind them. That way, we're not building a new street and having to come back and fix a water line or sewer line. So it's a good program, but this is the first step for Donaghy Avenue, which is one of those four, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, it is.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins, you throw Salem Road in that other three, that would be four, that, I can name those four.
Oh, I thought Salem Road was at the top of it. I'm sorry.
Well, it's right there.
Okay. For my friends.
We're starting with the bridge.
For my friends that are listening that live out on Salem Road, it's coming.
Yeah, we're starting with the bridge. Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance approving funds and approving professional services for the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's Ordinance O. 1890.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. And this is our first step on Donaghy Avenue. As you know, we're working with Conway Corporation, their engineering department, so that we're giving them a chance to work on their infrastructure, removing their sewer lines, water lines, repairing whatever they need to do. Finley's gonna start the process on getting the plans designed and drawn up. Conway Corporation will start their proceedings, or projects. I think they're gonna start in 2020, and then once they get all their infrastructure moved and taken care of, then we're gonna come behind them. That way, we're not building a new street and having to come back and fix a water line or sewer line. So it's a good program, but this is the first step for Donaghy Avenue, which is one of those four, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, it is.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Okay, next item is the one I think we want to talk about a little more, and this is an ordinance to rezone property at 819 and 853 Mitchell Street from R., no, this is not the one, I'm sorry.
No.
R. 2A to R. 1. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on September 17th, and at that time, the commission voted the request be sent to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And we have an ordinance to read for this. It's Ordinance O. 1892.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. What was the vote on the Planning Commission, Mr. Hawkins?
The vote was unanimous, six to zero.
Okay.
So they were short a few people that night.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to it?
I guess you were one.
To R. 1.
That's okay.
But what this is, is, I don't know if they're here or not.
Molly is.
Molly's here. But the Bernards were rezoning their property, which is currently zoned duplex, to R. 1, to take out any chance that it could be rezoned or be used as duplex. They just want to eliminate from that block the chance for anybody, I mean, they own the property, they have no intent of developing duplexes, but if they were to sell the property or somebody re-divide the property so that they could do duplexes, it's that possibility out there. So this is just a rezoning to remove that possibility of duplexes from that block. And I believe it was a unanimous decision of the Planning Commission.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a request for a conditional use permit for property located at 1904 Washington Avenue to allow restricted office in an R. 2A zone. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 17th of September, and at that time, the commission voted six to one that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, with some conditions. Hours of operation, signage, architectural compatibility, lighting, parking, screening, and office use is limited to the existing structure or additions to the existing structure. Any demolition of the existing structure must be approved by the Historic District Commission before it is to take place. And with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit with the listed conditions. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
And we have an ordinance here to rezone property located at 364 and 375 Dennison Street from R. 2 to MF3.
Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
In the emergency clause, Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Those both pass seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Hawkins?
Okay, next item is the one I think we want to talk about a little more. And this is an ordinance to rezone property at 819 and 853 Mitchell Street from R, no, this is not the one, I'm sorry. R2A to R1. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on September 17th. And at that time, the commission voted the request be sent to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And we have an ordinance to read for this. It's ordinance O-1892.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. What was the vote on the Planning Commission, Mr. Hawkins?
The vote was unanimous, six to oh.
Okay.
So, they were short a few people that night.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to it?
I guess you were one.
To R1.
That's okay.
But what this is, is, I don't know if they're here or not.
Molly is.
Molly's here. But the Bernards were rezoning their property, which is currently zoned duplex to R1, to take out any chance that it could be rezoned or be used as duplex. They just want to eliminate from that block the chance for anybody, I mean, they own the property, they have no intent of developing duplexes, but if they were to sell the property or somebody redivide the property so that they could do duplexes, it's that possibility out there. So, this is just a rezoning to remove that possibility of duplexes from that block. And I believe it was unanimous decision of the Planning Commission.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a request for a conditional use permit for property located at 1904 Washington Avenue to allow restricted office in an R2A zone. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 17th of September. And at that time, the commission voted six to one that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval with some conditions. Hours of operation, signage, architectural compatibility, lighting, parking, screening, and office use is limited to the existing structure or additions to the existing structure. Any demolition of the existing structure must be approved by the Historic District Commission before it is to take place. And with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit with the listed conditions. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
And we have an ordinance here to rezone property located at 364 and 375 Dennison Street from R2 to MF3. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission. At their August 20th meeting of this year, the Planning Commission voted that they would send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval with a nine to nothing vote. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O-1893.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Y'all are familiar with this one, so I'm good to step out of the way if there's anybody here to speak for or against it, if y'all want to take public comment, but
Yeah, I'd like to have some public comment on this if we could.
If you would, state your name and address for the record, please. Tim?
My name's Tim Tyler in 240 Skyline Drive here in Conway. Do y'all, would y'all like a copy of the plan, or do y'all remember from last time? Would you like? Okay. What we'd like to do is rezone this property, kind of like the property to the north of it, you rezoned MF3. We feel like this property to the south of it is also to be, should be rezoned to MF3. Mr. Stapleton is wanting to build a multifamily complex on this property. We have, at the time, when there was some controversy about the storm water coming to the, on the, coming from this property to the south, we had already calculated using the rational method for 100-year storm, and we got more than twice as much detention area on this than what would be required for the rational method. Using the SCS method that y'all just approved, it's going to be similar, but still, we'd make sure that all this would be calculated on the SCS method and for the 100-year storm. And again, I feel like we're more than double what it should be, so we're trying to be good neighbors and take care of that. And I think Mr. Stapleton has also got a price for cleaning out the ditch downstream. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
And he's willing to clean the ditch out downstream. Now, as far as replacing the culverts downstream, that's a different matter. Hopefully, the street department and the city would help out on that, but for sure, he would do the cleaning of the ditch just south of him. If y'all got any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Anybody else would like to speak? Pearson, would you like to speak?
Rod Pearson, 2620 Bruce Street. And yes, I do like to speak. Thank you, Tim. I've known you've been a surveyor for 112 years, but I didn't know you were an engineer.
I'm not, I got an engineer with me.
Okay.
I'm just glorified survey.
Well, I used to be glorified. Not anymore.
Here, I'm going to give you a copy of this if you'd like.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Well, if you recall, last time we met, Mr. Maltby, my neighbor, and I submitted for consideration of this issue, an engineering report from Marler Engineering Company in North Little Rock that detailed the shortcomings of the existing storm drain in the 2600 block of West Martin Street that the property under consideration is bordering and that is serving as a primary egress for storm water runoff at the present time. And to reiterate, Mr. Maltby and I, all along, had never opposed, in principle, the rezoning. Our only concern is, was and is, you know, the adverse effect that a high-density complex would cause for storm water to come on to us. And I do appreciate Mayor and Council for being attentive to our concerns, and I, I'm aware of the ordinance amendment that we just heard you all pass, and I appreciate it. I have had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Vincent on the subject, and he, at least, he tried to explain to me what this ordinance will prevail, because I'm not really well-versed in engineering. I asked him to explain it to me like a five-year-old, and that's basically what he had to do, was just show me like a five-year-old. At this point, we, Mr. Maltby and I, have to depend on Mr. Vincent and the city to ensure that our concerns are addressed. We are now in your all's hands to say, hey, this is going to take care of the problem. And for myself, you know, I'm not going to be a continued hindrance in this. But I do hope that the city will understand that we are looking to you to make sure that our concerns are addressed. Okay? So, if in two years from now, this does cause an adverse effect to Mr. Maltby's property and/or to mine, then of course, we will turn to you. Now, I do have a question, and my question is to Mr. Clausen.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clausen, I'm not well-versed in municipal ordinance law. Now, with us passing this ordinance tonight, minutes ago, ink not even dry, and then passing the rezoning tonight, are we going to incur any kind of conflict, any second guesses, any gray area to where developers can come back later on and say, well, you know, we didn't have enough time, this is not valid, we're not going to abide by it?
Well, I can't think of every hypothetical, but I know that they're going to re-engineer their plan under the new method.
And is the city going to be confident in holding them to that standard to where we can't? I worked for Conway PD a long time. Sorry, my skepticism is inherent. You know, I always look for the
Well, and one thing I want to explain too is, you know, I'm not really familiar with the exact topography over there in your area, but I do know the new rules. It's only, it's not going to be worse than it is now.
That is understood.
It's not going to cure the problem.
That is understood.
I don't want you to have expectations that are
That is understood. That part is understood. I'm now talking about, you know, the city being able to enforce the new standard, you know? We're doing this all in one night. New ordinance rezoning. Is there going to be any gray area or any possible legal challenge?
I'm confident in what, especially with this particular project with the people you're working with, I'm confident that what we did tonight will, at least as far as the regulations of the engineering requirements for the drainage in this particular project, there won't be any issues.
That's my only other concern about this. If the city is confident in meeting our concerns, then, and you all will be happy to hear this, I will shut up and sit out.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Finley, would you like to, would you step up just a minute? Case Council has any questions for you?
I'm sorry, was there something you wanted me to say? Oh, okay.
Could you offer some input on this, please?
No, I don't think so unless there are any questions from the council.
A couple, if I could.
Yes, sir.
How many pipes, drainage pipes are there over there in this area? Do you know off the top of your head?
Well, all of the, all of the water that comes from the site in question goes to one 12-inch pipe, but it goes through several driveway culverts before it gets there.
Okay.
Probably a, between four and six driveway culverts before it gets there, some of which are in need of repair. And actually, we'll probably be reaching out to some of those property owners in the coming weeks and encouraging them to allow us to help them replace some of those.
Okay. The cost of replacing one with something a little bit larger so it would handle some more volume would be what?
moot, because the one downstream is only 12 inches.
Okay.
So, it's more of a problem of if it's crushed rather than it being undersized.
Okay. So, then, it needs to be the same size if it's crushed?
Correct.
Put a new one in?
Correct.
Cleaned out if it's not crushed?
Which we would do for free.
Okay, okay. And you're confident that the water, if this project were built, that it would not put any more water on Mr. Pearson or Mr. Maltby's property than currently ends up there? Would that be a safe statement to make?
I'm confident that if it were designed correctly and built as designed, that it would not, that the rate at which the water affects the downstream properties would not be increased.
And who would handle that design?
At the current time, it would be Tyler Engineering, as I understand it.
Mr. Tyler, can you design this properly?
We feel like we already have.
Okay.
And we feel like using the SCS method, basically, we designed it on the old method, and we feel like it was more, twice more than enough, even using the 100-year at that time, only required to be 10-year. So, we went above and beyond to 100-year, and now, using the SCS method, we feel like it's more than twice the amount of what it would be. So, yes.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, I had four and a quarter inches of rain in my rain gauge at my house this past weekend. Did you have similar readings at your place?
I don't maintain rain gauge suppressing, but the rain that we had was over an extended period of time. Six inches over three days, four days is not a problem. Three inches over 30 minutes is a problem.
That's the issue.
That's a problem.
So, you didn't have a swimming pool in your yard this time? I didn't drive by your house, so I didn't
I made sure that the ditches were open and clean, and I washed it, but it's the flash flooding now that pushes the water on to maybe the lowest part.
Okay.
And that's what really is concerning.
Okay.
And that's what the retention's for, the flash flooding.
And where's this retention pond going to be on this property? If you would, I would appreciate it.
You wasn't at the last meeting, so you didn't get them.
No, sir, was not. Thank you very much.
It's the gray area around here and there. Figuring on a 10-year storm, it's this, 25-year storms, that many square feet. 100-year storm, it's 4,900 square feet. We've got over 11,000 square feet figured out this. Twice as much, using the rational method, not the SCS method. There's not a lot of difference in the SCS method versus rational, but it's more explainable. But you can have that.
Thank you very much.
There is enough room here to do all of this.
Have y'all all seen this?
Yes.
I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Right, yeah. On three different years.
Heck, was our last meeting?
About 100, using the 100. We've got that much, using rational. Explainable, rational, but we still even use this guy.
That's why I didn't know the other. Okay, okay. Where was I?
We're trying to be good neighbors.
On a Tuesday night.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
O-1893. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Six oh one.
I'm sorry.
Six zero to one.
I did not hear that.
I didn't hear.
Six zero one. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. All right. Next up, we have the Public Safety Committee. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. First up, we have an order to appropriate funds received from Municipal League Insurance Program for the replacement of a rescue boat and motor for the Conway Fire Department. Chief Winter.
Racing on the water.
Yes, good evening. We've received an insurance check for $12,345 to replace our inflatable boat that was damaged last year during the flooding. We're just asking for acceptance of that.
So, move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
With the emergency clause?
And the emergency clause.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
In the emergency clause, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Those both pass seven to zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have a consideration to enter into an agreement with HPE Financial Services for Technology Purchase for the IT Department. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you use a master lease agreement with Hewlett-Packard Financial Services Company for technology purchases, if you'll remember back in February, we brought you kind of a simple form of a lease agreement for our server and storage infrastructure. This is kind of the next evolution of that. One of the requests that was made of me pretty often when I became director is, why are we, as respective departments, buying technology? Why aren't you doing that? And so, one of the things that we tried to do, and with Mayor Castleberry's help, is centralize the purchase of user systems into our budget for 2018. That was there. That was something the mayor allowed us to do. That was to ease the burden on the respective departments as well as try to build an effective lifecycle management program. So, what the program looks like, it's a three-year refresh cycle. So, every year, we're replacing about a third of the systems in the city. And that's to make sure that we provide up-to-date technology that's allowing employees to be productive and that we remain secure, frankly. Our practice had been buy a computer, put a five-year warranty on it, and run it till it died, which is not good. If you'll think back to 2014, you guys had to appropriate a significant amount of money to upgrade operating systems that had reached end of life. Well, that operating system reached end of life in 2009. It took us till 2014 to say, oh, crap, we've got to do something. So, effective lifecycle management would have, program would have alleviated a lot of that. This lease agreement allows us to do that because it's kind of in an iterative nature that we'll replace those in groups each year. And just kind of to reference that 2014, 41% of the systems that we have right now are running Windows 2007, which run out of extended support in 2020. So, with this program, we'll be able to replace all those before that period of time so we don't get in a situation where we have technology and have a big oops and have to come back and ask for an appropriation to do that, so. Chuck's reviewed this and was okay with it with some minor considerations from HPE FS. The only thing I want to say, just for transparency sake, a couple of weeks ago, you approved for an appropriation to do that. So Chuck's reviewed this and was okay with it with some minor considerations from HPE FS. The only thing I want to say, just for transparency sake, a couple of weeks ago, you approved money for body cam purchases, and part of that was PD purchasing additional storage infrastructure. This mechanism, this vehicle will also be used for that purchase as well. So, any questions?
No, I'm seeing this a lot with, with my profession, with a lot of companies are going to OpEx versus CapEx.
Yeah.
It makes a lot of sense, especially with the change in technology. So, you know, this isn't anything new, but a lot of other private businesses and other city municipalities aren't already doing.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Now, well, you mentioned that Chuck had reviewed it. There were just a few minors, so I'm assuming those corrections will be made before it's entered into?
Well, it's always a negotiation. You know, we try to, we try to get the best terms that we can, but a lot of times, especially with these huge companies, they're not so willing to bend. But we got what we could, and I'm comfortable with what we have.
Okay.
Mr. Knight, I don't see the number hidden in here anywhere. Is there not a hard number yet, so we're...
Yeah, this is just the vehicle to...
That's the negotiation that the council talked about.
Yeah. The purchasing is a separate component, and that's done off a state contract or cooperative purchasing. This is just approving the vehicle to be able to, to finance it.
Ballpark?
Uh, we're replacing a little under a hundred systems a year, so you can, you can look at ninety to a hundred and ten thousand, just depending on how everything specs out. So...
Thank you.
You bet. The lease payment, though, I should say, that's total purchase price. The lease payment's about a third of that. So...
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we allow you to enter into this agreement. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Any further discussion?
One more question. Are we, under this, are we able to still negotiate pricing, or is it going to be under, like, one of the state contracts?
Contracts.
Like, what's the tips, taps, or...
Traditionally, we use tip, taps, or a state contract. I will tell you that we are actually going to take quotes on this purchase, so we will see where the best deal is to be had with what vendor. You know, we've typically worked with an SHI or an Insight Public Sector on most of these things, because they do, are on those purchasing agreements. But we're going to take quotes on this project, just because of its size, before we decide how to move forward. So then, open market may be better than contract price.
And I think it's good to note that, you know, even though it's HP Financial Services, it's not required to be...
Correct.
HP product.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're signing something with HP product.
Yeah, that's right.
There's a different product.
Ironically enough, we're buying Dell gear and financing it through HP, so...
Exactly. HP Financial Services is just, it's specifically, it's way different than the HP.
They're making money coming in, going, aren't they?
It's a good gig. Good work if you can get it.
If you can get it.
Good job.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Knight took over. Security was a big concern for us, and I asked him to, to look into that. He hired an outside agency to come in and do a security check for us. They identified thirteen critical areas. And then I visited them again last week, and those areas have been taken care of. So you and your crew have done a good job, Mr. Knight.
Thank you.
Very good.
Lot of work to do that yet, though, but it's, it's an ever-evolving thing. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just say something while Mr. Tyler's still here and while Mr. Vincent is still here, this, this rezoning project that we just did with Mr. Maltby and, and Mr. Pearson present, that's going to be watched real close. So, so make sure you do it right. I know that you will. But if you, if you can do anything to keep that stuff off of them, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
As a city, we've got a group of folks that's fixing to take some extra training on, on stormwater, so. Good. All right. Next, we have consideration to approve a limited access agreement with MR Capital Partners. What this is, this, there's some property located off Dave Ward. Is it kind of right there by the Arkansas Heart Hospital where that's going to enter in?
Behind Pizza Ranch, isn't it?
Behind Pizza Ranch. Anyway...
It's, it's south of Dave Ward, behind the new Covington property.
Right.
Just south of H two O, I think.
Yeah.
Sports.
Their property is, butts the city's property on the south, where the police and the fire training grounds are. In order to build the number of units they're wanting to build in there, they would have, they have to have access for emergency vehicles.
Two.
I'm sorry?
Secondary access.
Two, secondary access.
Yeah, yeah, secondary access, but it will be used for nothing but emergency access. It won't be used for any other traffic. It'll have a lock gate with fire department, police department, and I'm assuming MEMs having, having keys to those gates. But it is strictly for, for that, and that was required by Arkansas State Fire Code. So Tim and his group worked with us on that. Chuck really worked really hard on this, as did Kenny Whedore from Fire Department, to come up with a plan that would keep everybody happy. So other than that, I don't, I don't see no reason why we can't allow them to move forward with their, their project.
I think it's actually a city ordinance also. Is that right, Brian? It's also a city ordinance to have those two accesses.
Right, that's all based on the...
Fire code.
Yeah, yeah, fire code.
That's what you have to talk about.
And, and just, so you know, we, we worked in, so I drafted the limited access agreement. We worked in a couple of different things, requiring the locks and the signage. And again, it's not for anybody that lives there, would work there, would want to access. It's, I think it's going to be kind of a mixed-use development with storage units and apartments. But we also, if they don't complete the development or start the development within a year, it automatically terminates, and some of those things we worked into the agreement as well.
Good.
What is the road? Does it come out the Sturgis Road?
Yes. Yeah, you know, right there, Mark. Just, just north and west of the tower there, that, right there at Finch Row, it'll come in there. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we enter into this agreement. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
This, this next one's going to be fun. Last, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the purchase of the property at, at eleven eleven Main Street. That is the...
Better believe it.
The old federal building. We are set to close on this property October first, and RFQ for architects should be back from the council at the end of October. So we're moving right along on this.
I make a motion, we waive the readings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zero. Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Emergency clause.
With the emergency clause?
Clause.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The oh eighteen ninety-five. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
A hearty yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And the mercy clause, Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
A regular yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Those both passed seven to zero. That was ninety-five. That's all we have on the agenda tonight, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.